We've got, I'd like to welcome everybody to our June 3rd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first order on the agenda is the approval of the May 6th minutes. Are there any minutes, any changes or concerns? Questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as is.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. And one extension, motion's, minutes passed unanimously. I'd like to make an announcement now, as far as we're at old and new business, the proper was pulled from the agenda. It's not listed onto this current, today's agenda, but it was advertised. So if anybody is here for the proper, that will be at a later date, so watch for further announcements for that. That said, Greenfield subdivision, this is a request of SC Civil for an extension for one year.
Good evening. Mike Jeffords with the City of Fairhope. So the Greenfield subdivision, it's coming on its two-year expiration. During the preliminary review of this, there was a traffic improvement occurring at County Road 13 and County Road 32. There were a couple of questions in regards to what the traffic impacts may be, what the utility impacts may be for that. You can see on the screen is a condition of the, conditions of approval for that. The applicant, the roundabout has been completed. They are working on or have received the updated traffic study. However, with it being two years, the utility departments had concerns of where those utilities were going to be coming from, and maybe the upgrades that were committed to on the front end. So what staff is going to recommend is a 90-day extension of this preliminary to allow the applicant to go to a utility review meeting and discuss what the current preliminary approval for those utilities are, to be sure that there's not any changes that would need to be made, that would require this to go back through for a preliminary review, or if those are some upgrades that can be done at time of building permit. Other than that, there are no substantial changes to the layout design or any other aspect for that request for this extension at this time. So if the applicant is agreeable to that as well, but that's where staff's recommendation is, for a 90-day extension. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for staff? All right. This is the first extension on this one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, this is not a public hearing, so commissioners, any issues with that? If not, I'll accept a motion for a 90-day extension.
I move we grant a 90-day extension.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda, 115211 for 14,000, well, actually closer to 17,000 of linear feet of buried fiber.
Before I forget, Mr. Chairman, did these two of your agenda stuff?
Thank you, sir. We might have gotten out a little earlier, Hunter. Come on.
So there's at least one group of people that would be mad at me if we did that. So this is the, the plan, kind of the location, that's Fairhope Avenue and Bishop Road is kind of the main intersection there. In the center of that plan, there it is on the screen, the purple lines are reflective of some of the, the, the purple is the private?
All counties in the private.
Okay. So there are some rightaways here that might be in the county, might be in the city, but they don't separate the, the lines, so the hat's just showing the areas within our rightaways. It falls under the franchise agreements and 115211 reviews. The one note we do have here, rightaway contractor inspector and as built will be submitted to our GIS department, the GIS manager, GIS tech is listed here, so. And then the door hangers, I want to reemphasize this to all of our fiber and AT&amp;T, they did a really good job of this when we first implemented this, and it alerts the people where things are coming. We actually were checking the numbers so that somebody familiar with that project is there to answer. That's kind of fallen through the wayside for a couple, after a couple of years. We're getting a lot of these that people don't even, in their neighborhood, that don't even know they're coming, so want to reemphasize that requirement. But other than that, staff does recommend approval of this utility review. It kind of falls in line with everything else, with all the others we do.
Okay. Thank you, Hunter. Any questions for staff at this time? Is anybody here on behalf of AT&amp;T? All right. Commissioners, any questions? Concerns? Eric, are you good with this?
No, I think we're good.
All right. In that case, if there are no questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve UR 24.06 for AT&amp;T subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's put Rebecca down on that second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, a request for, from Thomas Hospital for an addition.
Okay, this is request of the applicant Dennis Summerford on behalf of the owner of Gulf Host, Gulf Health, I'm sorry, Gulf Health Hospitals for a site plan approval of the Thomas Hospital Northwest Edition. The proposed addition consists of a 25-bed tower and a parking facility. It's 0.70 acres and is zoned B2 at 750 Morphe Avenue, and it is located within the medical overlay district. So there's the maps, and this is a site plan review, so it goes on to city council. That's what it will look like when it's all said and done. Morphe's the one at the top. And then there's a nice rendering. I'm sorry. Okay, and as a reminder, and more about this later, the intent of the medical district overlay is to establish and provide for the logical expansion of medical office needs to accommodate the growing community and region. It's the express intent of the MO district surrounding the existing medical center to be as generous as possible and permitted uses while at the same time maintaining a clean, attractive community that provides an extension of the medical office needs for medical practices and appropriate facilities for the medical community it serves. And that's Article 5, Section H1 of our zoning ordinance. Parking and hospitals are both permitted uses in the medical overlay district. And stay tuned, because there's more about that later. The medical overlay district uses B4, the Business Professional Development standards. However, Thomas Hospital is actually zoned B2, so that makes it exciting. And B2 only has a front setback of 20 feet. So the proposed addition has rooftop equipment that matches the height of the existing adjacent building, and that's approximately at 66 feet. The materials and finish of the addition will also mimic that of the existing structures at Thomas Hospital. The proposed structure has four stories, the ground level is for physicians and staff parking, and the three upper levels will be for hospital beds. Staff has proposed a corresponding zoning amendment on the June Planning Commission agenda that would allow the height by right for critical hospital infrastructure. So there was a landscaping plan, didn't have sidewalks, now there's another landscaping plan, which was reviewed and approved by the City Horticulture Supervisor. There, we're still looking at it, updated plans are currently under review, will know more by the time against the city council. As for sidewalks, the site plan includes sidewalks on Murphy Avenue that shall extend to Hospital Drive and on the eastern side of South Ingleside Avenue. There will be a new crosswalk installed at Hospital Drive and Morphe Avenue, but we do want to maybe flesh out whether there needs to be a signalized crosswalk at the mid-block of the Ingleside Avenue. And that's what it looks right now, that upper one is a South Ingleside midway crosswalk. It actually goes into another parking lot with it curves like that. And then the snippet underneath is the required five-foot wide side, concrete sidewalk along Morphe. Okay, so parking is still up in there, it's something that's going to have to be fleshed out. The currently proposed plan adds 25 beds on one floor, the specific uses of the upper two floors are undetermined at this time. Additional parking will be required prior to the utilization of the upper floors. The ground floor provides 49 parking spaces, that was the visual we saw earlier. 34 spaces are replacing existing spaces and do not count toward the required parking, so there are 34 to begin with. There are 15 new spaces, and the parking requirement for this phase is 31 new parking spaces, 25 beds, and 96 employees is what we were given by Thompson. And the current solution is lacking 16 parking spaces, that would need to be accommodated for during future phases. I will point out, they did their site data table a little wonky, because it's supposed to be one parking spot for every four beds, which is what you see under the health facilities here, and they had done one space per one bed. So that needs to be updated, and I'm sure the gentleman from the hospital will have something to say, to add to it. So that's what the roof's going to look like, kind of how they've screened the equipment on top, so hopefully you won't be able to see it from the road, that's the idea, and it'll match the existing structure. There was no lighting plan submitted, there's not anticipated dumpster, there was a drainage report, drainage report was not submitted, but a grading and drainage plan is in-depth and it's on, it's in the packet. Drain basins and other details affiliated with stormwater are also in said packet, and there are several great inlets and storm pipes that are being removed, and you can see in-depth that on the demolition plan.
And just to supplement that, Richard Johnson did look at that, there's no, this was a parking area, it was impervious, it was, it was a all asphalt parking lot, so there's no additional impervious surface, so there was no drainage facilities, it's just tying to, into the existing drain line, so relocating some of those inlets is what the, the plan calls for.
Sign plan was not submitted, they hadn't anticipated one at this time, there might be one later on. And erosion control plan was submitted with the application, and it's deemed to be acceptable. And there's just one of the elevations, because you can kind of see how it favors the existing So the utility plan was submitted that requires multiple locations of several things, poles, guy wires, water lines, underground electric, including high voltage lines. So the Fairhope Electric Department will supply conceptual plans for both existing and proposed electrical infrastructure underground, and the engineer of record shall coordinate all requirements with the new electrical lines. This development did not trigger a traffic study. The volunteer fire department has asked if it was possible to install a rooftop helipad to accommodate emergency landings. The previous one was, that was used, was removed during a previous parking expansion project, and we had asked about that in a May 9th correspondence, but we still haven't heard anything about that. So this is just a recommendation to city council, so we do recommend the planning commission to recommend conditional approval to the city council for this site plan review with the following conditions: revised landscape plans are approved by the City Horticulture Department, plans relocating utilities and stormwater facilities are finalized, address the heliport option, the required parking compliant with Table 4.3 of the zoning ordinance shall be provided prior to the buildout of the proposed tower, update the site data table that we mentioned, and approval by city council of proposed amendments in an upcoming case, the ZC 2403.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started on follow-up, we did receive some, an email yesterday to discuss some of the, the parking at the hospital, a study for the whole site. We haven't had a chance to really vet that today, but, but there was actually a surplus by our zoning ordinance that, that the hospital has, and we'll, we'll check that math and make sure. I think that's, and you can, anyway, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a goal to add some additional parking in future anyway, so whether it meets our ordinance or not. So just do, wanted to add that, that that information was provided to us yesterday.
Thank you, Hunter. Any questions for staff at this time?
Just, just to clarify, I wish we could have gotten that email, but is the parking being, is the parking being provided, is not even sufficient for the, the floors that will be occupied immediately? Is that what I'm?
So what we, the, the variable that we didn't know is what is the requirement for the overall project?
Yeah, but that's on them to show us, right?
I agree. But we, when we wrote the staff report, we did not know that answer. So we got the information yesterday, and it, based on that math, looks like there is no, and there's 200 surplus parking spaces at the hospital.
Yeah. But it's not something that we've seen or shared, or we're being asked to prove something without that information? Or recommendation?
Well, we have a condition there that will, we, before, and again, we have two floors unfinished as part of this project. So before that gets permits and build out for that, then the parking for the whole complex will mark up, will conform to our parking ordinance.
I totally hear that, I just wasn't really liking the precedent that we, we don't even have proof of compliance with the floors that will be occupied, and yet we're...
That's true, but, and if this were anything other than a hospital...
Right.
We'd be kicking them to the curb and telling them to get out.
And I think that's why we had the meeting before.
But we've got people right now that are having trouble getting hospital beds and are sitting in the emergency room for three days because they can't get a room, you know, when you measure that difficulty of somebody parking and, you know, having to maybe even park across the street and get an Uber, you know, whatever, that, that's probably the lesser of the two evils. And we discussed, you know, this pretty heavily in some of the pre-meetings that we had.
But in between then and now, it would have been nice for us to provide it with that information.
Certainly. Certainly. And again, like Hunter said, this is a process, and they've got to go through a number of layers to get approved, and then, and I've been telling Norman, how many years has, have I made my, my suggestions of one-way roads ins and outs, and shown how incredibly intelligent I am with, with how many more parking spaces we can get? So, and that is something that definitely needs to be looked at, without a doubt. And again, for those of you in the audience, this is a zoning site plan approval, dealing with an ordinance, so we don't have any, as, and Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't have any authority over that, so we will make a recommendation to the city council, and they'll take our recommendation and, and listen and do what they will with that. Also, we are, with our bylaws, we are asked to document any discussions or meetings we've had about a project that is not in here. And with that, I will say that we've had a couple of meetings in the mayor's chambers discussing the, this project, and discussing, at one point, the parking garage was going to be a lot closer to Morphe and had some setbacks, and this is probably the third iteration, and I think, I think through those discussions, we've made a lot of improvements, and I don't think, again, if this were a shopping center, it wouldn't be approved, and it wouldn't meet all of our requirements, but again, this is not a shopping center, it's a hospital, and it's one of the two or three most, well, maybe the most important thing to a lot of the citizens in our community. I think, Norman, how many times have I run into you in the hallway visiting, you know, friends and family in the hospital in the past six months? It's pretty, pretty, pretty common, so it's, it's just, it is an important thing. So with that said, if you did have any meetings with Thomas Hospital, and that, should we do a hand raising or just?
Yeah, just meetings with the development team or anyone on, you know, from the public as well, meetings or just comments, phone calls, that sort of thing, I mean, just, just general description.
I was just mentioning about the design team, but we didn't discuss it.
And I had a meeting here that I think was a advertised meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, does that include the open meeting that we had?
Yeah, we had a joint meeting.
No, if there's a publicly advertised meeting here, then that, that's in the process.
And then we had another meeting with the design team early on in the mayor's conference, and I know Paul Fontno was in that, and I think Jay was as well.
That was.
All right, so...
I think that was all representatives, council, free commission, planning commission.
Correct.
We had one before the big meeting of at least one member from all the groups when it first came out.
With that said, if there are no more questions for the staff at this time, would anybody from Thomas Hospital like to make a proposal, or would you like me to open the public hearing first, and then?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It's a recommendation.
All right. Y'all, y'all like to make a presentation at this time? Y'all have anything to add?
I appreciate y'all's time and support, the city of working through all this, and it's been a part of the project, and we've had that several iterations, looking at a comprehensive project, but I just appreciate y'all working through this for us and providing that support. So thank you.
And for the record, that's Norman Thompson, you're the, what's the title, President of Thomas? President of Thomas, the director. All right, this is not a public hearing, anybody from the public have anything they wish to add to this at this time? All right, in that case, commissioners?
I have just a question for the other commissioners. I think, I know a concern was using the landscape to buffer the height, and I think they have some great trees selected, the willow oaks and the native French trees along at Morphe, but, and they're, they're 10 feet tall, and they're not insubstantial, but with, with such a tall building, you know, is that, is that enough? You know, do we need, do we feel like that's enough to mitigate the height of that building against the residential street?
That's a very good question, and also, we had discussed in one of our meetings, the power lines out there, and whether those power lines would remain above ground or be put underground on the Morphe side, because those power lines, you know, what's whacking those trees, doesn't really matter what you put there, they're going to get to a certain size and get whacked.
And to answer that question first, to get to the landscape, not only do we have to worry about the existing power lines, but there is a bigger project to, it's the high voltage lines that will come in and connect to the, the electric loop to the north. That's going to help us have a lot of redundancy in the city. That was going to be overground, but to do this building, the, those high voltage lines almost have to be put underground, as close as it is, and that, that was sent, our electric department got the schematic plan for that, that's not a approved project, so we kind of had to, I mean, our, our electric department really jumped through a lot of hoops to try to get some schematic layout, because we weren't quite ready for that project yet, but to at least be able to work with the hospital where it was going to be, I believe we got that last week. And it, it will be closer, the, those lines will be underground and really closer to the pavement of Morphe, so to get out of the landscape areas, there'll be a sidewalk, and they'll be installed underneath that, so if there's ever any maintenance, it's easier to pull a sidewalk up than all the landscaping, and we're trying to get some mature trees in there, so.
And both will be underground?
Yes. Yes. That, that has not been, the final engineering of that is, is not installed, but they're, we're going to move on the Ingleside, it's going to move to the west side of the road on the Ingleside, and then cross over and follow the Morphe rightaway back to Green Hill.
Item one on the recommendation says revised landscape plans are approved by the City Horticulture Department. Is that correct tense, or is it are to be approved?
So the one thing we want to review, and certainly invite any conversations about plant material, that was a conversation I've had, I think, coming out of the meeting, joint meeting, there was some, you know, really, the verticality of some of the plant material is very important, especially since there's only 20 feet. So certainly welcome that. The revised plans are not on the slide that we received for the landscape plans, but they are in your packet. There was a sidewalk added that extends north on Ingleside and then turns east on Morphe to Hospital Drive. That cuts a little bit of the space out for the, where the landscape is, especially on that corner, and we just don't have much room there. So I do welcome any feedback we have on, on that landscape and what we can do there. We want to see that landscape plan revised a little bit, especially on that corner, but any input we can get is welcome.
I was going to, I was going to make some suggestions on that, as far, and I was going to talk to Jamie, the city horticulturist, in that the willow oak, although it's, you know, it's a good tree and does well in our city, but it's probably not the most columnar, you know, variety, and, and there are other varieties that would have to be pruned less and would interfere with, you know, the street and the building less than, you know, the width of a water oak. And then some of the understory trees, I think some selections could be made that also are more vertical, that helped to soften the height of that building. That's some pretty, some good trees, but very sort of short flowering trees that maybe could, that their landscape architect, you know, could maybe select some ones that would help with the softening of the, of the building height. Also, on the, on the demo plan, I see the trees that are to be, that are obvious in the footprint of the building, but listed to be demoed are these four bald cypress, which, I don't know if that's to make way for the sidewalk, but they're, they're not in the footprint of the building itself, and I believe those have been topped off by the city or the utilities department, but they, they are, they are in front of the existing, like, emergency entrance, that they're a little bit further down, they're not within the, so I was just wondering the reason that those four bald cypress were being removed.
And I actually spoke to Chairman, or Commissioner Fontno earlier today, and asked him to say some of those on record, because Christopher Grant with Thompson Engineering is the landscape architect, him and Nick Combs were not available tonight, they had a conference they had to be at, so I think all those are valid concerns and questions that should be addressed in the revised landscape plan, so I appreciate those comments.
Yeah, I'd like, number one, where it says revised landscape plans are approved by the city's horticultural department, it sounds like they've already been approved. I, I would like that to be written, revised landscape plans are to be approved by City Horticulturalist and Tree Committee Chair, and then just let them look over it. I mean, it's, you know, those are the things, I mean, I get amazed sometimes when I see, you know, subdivisions that have 10, $20 million buildouts and spend $30 on trees outside, and you're asking to plant a few more, and I mean, it's not, not much of a cost, and you get the right trees at the right time, and, you know, that's a pretty tall building that we wouldn't approve for anybody else right across the street from a residential, and whatever we can do to soften that, I think would, would be nice just for the community, because that is a pretty, pretty use thoroughfare coming through there on Morphe.
And just another, and a minor thing, but it's, it would be nice if the landscape architect included the, the DBH of the new trees rather than just eight or 10 feet. It's very clear on, you know, on his plan that 120-something or 130-something diameter worth of trees are being removed, but it's not clear on how many diameter of trees are being installed, so.
Well, and in, in that review process, you know, I know there's a sweet spot where if you get a tree too big, it's going to just be in shock for a little while before it grows, and so what's the biggest we could get, you know, that's not going to, you know, I've heard sometimes you can get a little smaller and they'll catch up in two years, and, and that's beyond my pay grade, what's the sweet spot to get the most impact, but I know that they would want the most impact in screening and breaking down the mass. And I did appreciate that those were, that they were native trees and that, you know, the flowering, maybe they're too small, but that would attract birds and wildlife, that's a nice thing for the city.
But I do agree, and one of the concerns were the width of some of those trees, even from a maintenance standpoint, so the hospital, you're going to have limbs growing into the windows and, and all of that, having, you're going to have half a tree at the end of the day.
We'll let the city Horticulturalist and Tree Chair work on that, hopefully, based on the final motion of the city council.
Can I, can I clarify for all, so?
Yeah.
I, I think I just, I think I read, I think I read it incorrectly, I was thinking that the required parking be provided prior to the buildout of the upper floors, it sounds like prior to the buildout at all, you're going to provide the required parking of what's going to be occupied then, and that I agree with, I was just taking up with...
No, we, we intended that to be the, was the way staff recommended, you change it, you do what, you know, as the plan was.
No, that makes sense, I'm, I'm misreading.
Of the two upper floors as they build out. That's what we intended, so.
And it, it looks like they've got a pretty good...
They, they get started on the tower, the shell, the parking, and the first floor.
Right, but, but have, have they run the numbers where it looks like they've got a pretty good chance at hitting that morgue?
I believe we're close to 200 parking surpluses, I joked that if that's the case, we need to change our regs, but...
What you were saying was more, okay, by buildout, do we mean the fit out of the...
Second and third floor.
Okay, but not the building, because at this point, maybe you've seen that we haven't seen that there's enough parking for the building at all, so I mean, that should be a, maybe it's just an obvious condition, but provide, clarify that the parking has been provided... that the parking has been provided for the first phase.
Sure. Nope, that's not what we wrote it as. We look back at the, kind of the history of Thomas Hospital, a lot of those are previous. The other tower, going back to 2004, and this is kinda, hey, we've got this project, we're gonna, you know, get the parking in, so that's the way we propose this. Certainly, as the planning commission and city council, if you wanna alter something, both of those projects followed up with a parking site plan through the years to address those things, and we've been in conversations about where some of that parking could be, but it's its own challenge. And we did want, I mean, I think even that joint meeting was moving forward with getting the tower started so we can get beds, but not ignore that there's probably parking.
Now, I understand it's a hospital, it's important, all I'm saying with the site data table, somewhere in here that we're saying, obviously before the first part is built, maybe you guys, you know, have already seen there's enough parking, but clarify that that parking, you know, show the compliance with the parking ordinance for the first phase, you know.
Again, we didn't recommend that.
I mean, this is saying it'll be compliant.
Yeah, so that really does say that, that's not what they meant, that was what I'm hearing.
I think so, they did mean it'll be compliant to the other.
We said in the, this, they're gonna be beds being utilized.
How many you saw?
The first two stories, they didn't show compliance with that parking, not the second two, but the first one, the parking lot. The part that's gonna be, what I was understanding from the staff comments is at the time that we got this packet, we didn't, it didn't, we were still short.
No, they were saying that they had a screw up on how they were counting this stuff and didn't count it correctly. This, as I read it, says that the parking will be compliant prior to anybody moving into a bed. Is that not correct?
No.
In that case, we need to have it clarified. In that case, I agree with Rebecca.
Well, I think they need to update their site data, too. I didn't mention as well that when they sent us this last night, there's only 25 additional employees, I think is what they mentioned, and?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah, and this one has 96. Had Thompson put 96, so.
We had.
It just, it may be that there's plenty of parking on that whole site, but just, that needs to be cleaned up to show that there's enough parking for the park that's gonna be occupied immediately.
Yeah.
So explain what number four means, so I understand what you're trying to say.
When that was written.
Sixteen set deficit.
Last week, there was a, assuming that the rest of the, everything currently built on Thomas Hospital meets zoning, to the letter. We're netting 15 parking spaces, so there was a few parking spaces that were not attributed at this phase for the 25 beds being added and the numbers we were given by Thomas, Thompson Engineering. Okay, that was, that was when it was written. So we did intend for that to be written so that the building can be built and the 25 beds can be occupied, but before they got permits or approved plans for the second and third floor, they would have to have a solution to bring the whole site into compliance with parking. That was the intention. That was the staff's intention when we wrote it, but we've since gotten some clarification. There's only 25 employees instead of 96, and they have given us some numbers yesterday on the rest of the complex. So if you would like to change that recommendation, you can, it's going on to city council, there could be time to clarify that in between, and you certainly, as a planning commission, can make your recommendation to that, and it doesn't have to agree with staff at all.
Well, could the, update the site data table be added on to that, that condition be elaborated upon to say, update the site data table to clarify before the council considers it, that they can see the parking?
We don't move site plan, if it's site data table, if it's a revised landscape plan, we don't put those on council agenda until we get those revisions.
Okay, well, that, just to clarify what we're asking for in the site data table, just clarifying compliance with parking.
Should we not change it to build out of floors two and three?
That would be, provide more clarity.
Because.
I mean, three and four.
Four floors, three.
Three and four.
Three and four.
Two and four be shelved out, two and four be shelved out.
But we're currently short on floor two.
You know, just clarify how we're counting floors with the parking being the first floor, we're counting the ground as the first floor and then second, third floor.
That's what I'm trying to get at, we need to, we need to get this so we.
The upper two floors?
Yeah, before the, before the two uppermost floors are built out.
Additionally, I mean, I just, we're short on the first build out of the 25 beds. What we have doesn't show compliance with that, so that's, I wanted to make sure that also gets clarified. It sounds like it has been, we just haven't seen.
We don't know that it is or isn't, but even if it isn't, we are still recommending that power get started. And whether you, the planning commission would like to recommend that, it's up to you and the council.
Well, with the change of number of employees from 96 to 25, they will be compliant.
It sounds likely.
Right there. It's closer, it's not compliant, but it's certainly closer.
Well, I think it needs to be addressed with council, I mean.
Well, that meeting we had with the council, they, we discussed this and they seemed okay with that, it being the hospital.
Yeah, but I thought they would, I thought it was, that we were okay with the fact that it probably is on site, we just need to show that it is, and that's, it's not good for the hospital.
All right, any other questions or concerns? I'll just, if one could be changed to revised, of the staff recommendations, revised landscape plans are to be approved by the city's horticulturist and tree committee chair, and number four, I think would be clarify more, saying required parking compliant with table four dash three of the zoning ordinance shall be provided prior to build out of the top two floors of the tower. I think we would all then know what we're discussing rather than questions, the build out would even be the first 25 beds.
So there's still corrections in the site data table, yeah.
Just doing the quick math, just the reduction of 96 to 28 floors, bringing the current weight of beds.
So, and if we leave the update site data table so that it becomes accurate, it will give the council what they need to see if there's enough parking.
We will, that's why we put that in there to ensure that happens.
Okay.
All right.
I make a motion?
Okay.
I move that we recommend conditional approval to the city council with the following revisions to the conditions. Number one, the revised landscape plans are to be approved by the city horticulturist, and I can't say it now either.
Sorry.
And tree committee chair. Number two, plans for relocating utilities to stormwater facilities. Number three, address the heliport option as requested on May 9, 2024. Number four, required parking compliant with table 4.3 of the zoning ordinance should be provided for the top two floors of the tower prior to build out, or prior to build out of the top two floors of the tower, and update the site data table number five.
Number six.
There's one condition added.
There's a number six.
Number six, approval by city council of the approved, I was reading it.
Oh, sorry. I tried to read it for you, but then you got stuck.
Of the proposed, I had memorized it, amendments in case ZC 24.03 medical district. Good practice.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for the request of Gilwood Mills and Kaywood on behalf of Starlight Development. Oh, no, we don't have the proper, excuse me. Let's move on to the next page. If we hadn't had the next page, we'd be over right now, Hunter.
That's right.
Highlands at Fairhope, I'll shut my mouth and let you take over, thank you. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, and actually, before I get even started on this, you know, this is the Fly Creek PUD that's been around for some time, and it was a multifaceted PUD that included the commercial apartments, this section of townhomes, and then even future build out to the east that's somewhere around 300 homes. And we received a few letters and concerns and calls that seem to be unfamiliar with this project. This has been approved, whether there will be townhomes here are not really up for discussion tonight. That's been approved, that PUD was approved, amended at least twice through the years. So we are not here to vote up or down a townhome. This is the follow-up subdivision case that create, make sure the utilities are there, the garbage is being picked up, and we're meeting the approved plans. So with that said, this is the MOP for an 85-unit property on 11.76 acres. TTL is the engineer, Stuart Speed, and his group are here with TTL to represent the development. The zoning for this, as I said, it is all one PUD, that is the kind of turquoise color shown on the left, and the properties we're looking at are on the right, this is the aerial overlay. You'll see the section in the middle, 2019, I believe, they were in front of your phase one of this, that split out, it'd be simple lots and a standard preliminary plat as well as an MOP for those lots. Those are created years or so ago, we started a conversation about amending that, that little slightly different product, the topography on this site is, I think, significant enough to, that warranted some of the changes, so we saw a PUD amendment come in and looked at those plans. We looked at the architectural plans and other things that go around with that, moving the roads slightly, and all of those were approved by the planning commission and city council in that zoning ordinance. This is the current plan sent, kind of the site plan, the way it lays out, you can see kind of the overlay grayed out are the commercial component to the west, the apartments to the south, and the things that jump out to you in color are this phase. I do, I'm gonna refer to sites one, two, and three in just a second when I talk about drainage, and when I do that, I'm talking about site three is right here. And while we got a good picture, it's, the drainage for most of this site, if you'll recall, there's a lot of underground drainage storage here with level spreaders and gabion stone walls, that a lot of this drainage was put in when this, when the apartments were built, and a lot of the utilities were installed. All of that ultimately gets to a pond that sits just off screen, I probably can show you, it's right here. The only thing, and it's for the treatment purposes, this site did not have any detention on it, so when we get to drainage, you'll see acknowledgement of some underground detention here on this site. This is six different building styles, when we get to some of the architectural questions, they exceed the parking. And as you recall, there were some plans we reviewed, had some discussions on the architectural. They are townhomes, there was some sketch plans, we really worked, there was a couple of changes we supported on the roof structures, because the sketch, sketches that were sent really, by the time it came down, couldn't be built. They didn't work out, so this is just a couple examples, but the full set of plant packet of architectural plans are in the packet. We did have a note on here that we didn't receive that key, a site plan that showed where each building type will be. As you see here, I struck through that, we had some clarification communication since the packets went out, that I'll get to kind of at the end of the slides. Again, drainage, I think I just discussed that. Dewberry Engineers did the master drainage plan for this, and it was not, we actually had two third-party engineers check that drainage calculations and studies at the time, and that was in 2017, and both said the same thing, just as future build out, make sure they're hitting their C factor and we should be okay. TTL has looked at all of those, meeting or exceeding the treatment. There was a 10, at the time, there was 10 LID components required, those were installed on the apartment site, and some here, we got one question that affects this property that we'll kind of show in just a second. Green space is dependent on the, the PUD is approved and amended through the years. There is a phasing plan, so one thing that will have to happen, this is proposed, is fee simple lots, so that has to have a preliminary plat. It's hard to do a fee simple lot until you know where the buildings are, so there's been some changes to the buildings and also the method of construction. So there's been some changes through the reviews of this. One, one thing to note, there were two, there was one building that was two units kind of sitting on this hillside, and when it got to looking at the topography, it was gonna be much more damaging and frankly, just ugly with this very steep driveway it's sitting here. So the quest was made to turn what was proposed as a six-unit building here into an eight-unit building for the units and leave this kind of as woodland as much as possible, but certainly not having a house sitting on the hill. So there will be some conversations about fee simple versus traditional townhome conveyance. I've already kind of planted that seed in Chris's mind, or, I'm sorry, with Hand, Darren Doll over here, a legal guidance, and I think that's something we really need to look at our subregs for and some potential amendments. What it boils down to sometimes, I'm understanding, certainly not an expert, if you wanna do fee simple, there's some different construction methods, and frankly, we need to know that on the front end with the application, and I think our regulations need to require that. You pick which way you're gonna build this and sell this, and we'll tell you what you need to submit with your application. So Eric's been working with the architect on methods of construction, but this is the second project that this has kind of come up on. We had another set of townhomes that made it all the way to permitting and then couldn't build the building as designed, so there's a lot of changes in the field that happened.
Yeah, it all, and what he's talking about, we had another townhome project come in, and the demising firewall that the architect drew, when the crew tried to build it, they deemed it unbuildable, so they came back later and decided to take some alternate methods and means and methods and sprinkler the buildings, which is gonna be something that's gonna come up here, too.
Right. And it gets down to, a lot of the, traditionally, the townhomes, you had a devising wall and you owned, the phrase was paint to paint, inside the sheet rock, and then the common interior wall was owned by the association and maintained, that took care of plumbing. Fee simple's a little different method of conveyance, but it's sometimes hard to figure out the fee simple lots until the building is built, and there's some state things that I need legal guidance on to amend our subregs accordingly.
Another concern they may have is as difficult as insurance is getting down here now, as few companies as we have, it's gonna be difficult to find somebody to insure the buildings of those, you know, when they're doing them individually rather than us.
On fee simple? See, that's the kind of stuff. There's also some, some things that I'm concerned about, and while we do not police covenants and restrictions or things like that, we want to ensure they're in place enough to take care, and we've got a few, Eric's dealt with a few, smaller, so it's not as big of a problem, but when you have one person that lives in a townhome, maybe their roof's leaking, and it's supposed to be a cost split amongst everybody in that building, is the way it's traditionally been, but it's not leaking on the other people, and they're like, I'm not ready to pay that. That becomes a problem that we have to deal with, so just making sure those things are in place and in our subregs and not rely on those covenants that we don't draft nor enforce is something we wanna make sure is happening. But getting back to kind of utilities, Fairhope utilities are available for water, sewer, and gas. Just wanna note, the availability letter is dated May 1st and is effective for one year, or it will need to be revised, so getting that permits and indoor plats done locks that in. I did want to mention, we did get a fire flow that was not where we expected it to be, but that wasn't, if we should be. be, but that was, if we should be, I would assume in the next two weeks. Right now, our water crews are boring under Fly Creek. You know, there was a leak that was discussed in council, almost emergency response that got, the council got a contract approved, and they're putting, actually upgrading at the time from, to a 16-inch from the 12 that was there. So some of that pressure was attributed to that, that work. We will make sure those fire flows are, when that is fixed and the fire hydrants are installed, that the flows are accordingly. The traffic study was done with the PUD amendment. There, there is, and I'll, I need to go back to this. There was a request, and I want to explain why this does, there is a private drive here. And there was a quest, I think Public Works had had the request a few times, and they wanted a yield sign installed on Cordy Ridge Road. I mean, the Cordy Ridge Road is the public road. We don't, you know, typically put yield signs on a main road for driveways. You know, maybe there's some other concerns that we can address. I know it's a weird angle, so maybe there's some sightline issues we can, we can address. But I don't think a yield sign here in the middle of what is going to become a major thoroughfare is the appropriate answer. But we'll certainly entertain any other solutions we can work out. Let's see, the, right now, the final solution for how garbage is going to be collected has not been finalized, but they are working toward that solution. It will, they're not public roads, so it will not be city collection. That will be finalized before the final plats come in. Even during the PUD, and I think before, there was some current, some concerns from the neighbors to the north. Just want to note here, there is a little bit of a conflict between two sets of plans, and I think it was just a lot of changes to the engineering and then the landscape architect getting that information. But there is a 15-foot undisturbed, the intent there is the visual screen, kind of leave the plants there that are there, maybe fill in where there is gaps. But there is an undisturbed buffer. And then there will be a, the tree ordinance buffer required, which is, in this instance, they've elected to do a fence and one row of shrubs that are 48 inches at time of planting? Is that one of the fence? So that will have to be out of the 15-foot buffer, but within the 20-foot buffer. So we will need to see the revised landscape plans to accommodate for that. I'm going to, I'm going to show you this one, and I want to point out this white area here, but then I'm going to skip through some of the next slides that, I think some of the sidewalk and pedestrian plan conversation in our staff report was a little confusing. We've got a simpler answer. This plan was approved with a previous, 2016. And you'll note, the two pink lines were kind of the plans, sidewalks that were proposed at that time. But getting down, this is a recommendations in the packet, just if we have any questions, you'll see a revised set of conditions when we get through these, additional information submitted. So we did see a, an email today that came through and trying to get this information clarification to you. We did see, they did do what we requested and had the architectural plans. We typically put just the site plan in the packet for the city, or for the Planning Commission. Those labels were on plans labeled for paving and striping, and we just didn't look at that set of plans. We've got tons of plans to go through. So we didn't see those. We do have those, and they cross-reference with the architectural elevations. There is a crosswalk on the, the plan, depending on what we do with sidewalks, that may be, I think the crosswalk's still going to be needed, and that is the right location. So we'll work with the, making sure the, like the truncated domes, we have a city standard and make sure those are done right. So this is really getting into the sidewalk conversation. The plan I just showed you was, was just white space with the assessment of the sidewalks that were out there. Members of TTL actually went on-site, and there is a partial sidewalk from the apartment side into kind of the back of the pool area and a, and a dog park shown in this area. So you see the dog park on the left. It's gravel path sidewalk, or stairs coming out of the apartment complex. Also showed pictures, and this is on the south side of the, the apartments, kind of in this area. You see what the slope looks like there. So I believe this is when some of the drainage came into play and the underground storage, the level spreaders, all of that happened. So the sidewalk on this side is conflicting with those drainage things, and we do also think that's redundant. The main goal, there's two public roads, Fly Creek Avenue and Parker Road. As this develops to the east, our main concern is there's public access point to both of those roads. It's obviously already there on Cordy Ridge. It is not there connecting this easternmost development, future development phases with Fly Creek, which is here. This is the public road. So what we are suggesting on, at this time is, this, all the yellow is the existing sidewalks, kind of the public sidewalks. There's also internal for both the apartments and the townhomes. The blue is what they proposed, and this kind of moved back from the PUD. It showed a sidewalk on the north side of Cordy Ridge Road. The previously approved PUD did not have a sidewalk at all on, on Cordy Ridge. When they started looking at the topography, they said, hey, we proposed, and in response to our comments, they moved the sidewalk to the north side of this site too, I believe. That starts getting in some tight areas. You kind of push up against those buffers. It really doesn't have the connectivity we're looking for anyway from the east, because that's a pretty steep hill, and you're going on private property. So what we're suggesting is the finish, this, this never got built, even though it was on the previous plans. Getting this connectivity from here to Cordy Ridge will give the, I think, the public access points. Now that will need to be a public access easement. City don't want to maintain it if it's going to be gravel, you know, but for people to walk through and get back to this part of the commercial development, I think is critical. So we are recommending kind of this plan. We, we got everything put together and amended the slides about 4:15. So we, we sent them to the development team and see what they have to say about this. I don't know if they agree to it or not. But we also received some additional plans. We did receive clarification, I'm sorry, not, kind of renderings to show what the development looks like. We did make a call, because if you look at all the architectural plans, there's a variety of colors and details, and we looked at this, and it was monotone. So they, they do intend to follow the architectural plans and the color, colors and different materials that are shown on the architectural plans. But this is, these are the plans. The other, you know, only other subtlety, and we do want the engineer to confirm this, it was probably installed, but this is out in the woods, the area between where the apartments and the townhomes will be. And this area was a required drainage swell, grass swell is part of the LID techniques that were approved. It splits the property line, so that's kind of the area where that path would have to meander through. So just want to confirm that that was actually installed, being that that was a, and maintained through the, the construction of this project. So with that said, we do recommend approval of SD 1444. We amended the recommendations of those conditions, and I'll read those into record to make sure we get them. The pedestrian circulation plan shall be amended to reflect staff recommendations. Developer will work with staff to ensure public pedestrian connectivity is achieved. Crosswalks are installed per city regulations, and each townhome has pedestrian access to the public paths/sidewalks. Additional, additional planning shall be required within the 10-foot buffer where the townhome residential lot abuts the fire department. It's incompatible uses to ensure there's a visual screen. Revised landscape plans shall be submitted for staff review prior to application of a building permit. Landscaping plans, number four, landscaping plans shall reflect, reflect the height of plants and trees required at the time of planting. Number five, a 15-foot buffer shall be required along the north property line and maintained by the common ownership of the townhomes. The buffer shall remain undisturbed, although additional plannings shall be added to provide an opaque screen. Number six, construction methods and UL listings shall be reviewed for fire protection purposes prior to submission of any building permits. And number seven, the engineer shall confirm installation of the grass well required as part of subdivision case SD 17.24. I believe all, we have our design team and the developers here if there's any question for those, and we can certainly ask any, answer anything from the staff perspective.
Thank you, Hunter. Any questions for Hunter at this time?
Hunter, does, does this build out the PUD, or is there further development within this PUD to come?
We do not have a full plan of that. The, the only thing that graphically shows it, the, there is, trying to find the best plan. There is a resident, single-family residential component to this PUD. So it's not built out. Let's get to the best, I'm going to go back to all the way to the top, this one right here. So this road was the only public street and Fly Creek Avenue that stops down here. This continues to, more land to the east. That is a future development. We haven't seen or heard any conversations about when that might happen. But the intent there is Cordy Ridge Road will extend to that phase of development and make the connection, vehicle and pedestrian connection to those future phases. The only thing through the PUD, all the PUD amendments through the years, I think those just addressed this site where the apartments and the townhomes sit. So it goes back to that original PUD. I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
So it's really just that small area you indicated that's still to be built out within the PUD?
It's not a small area. I mean, there's 300, around 300 homes, approximately.
To the east?
To the east. Yeah, there, there's quite a bit of acreage. You can see if it shows it. I believe it's this area. Don't, don't quote me there, but it's to the east. There's a, there's a bigger piece of Porsche, of property that is, was in that original Yeah, it's here. Part of that is the, the apartments, and then kind of this area back here is the rest where the single-family components would be.
So I guess any impact of that future development, is it really not going to be considered within this development?
No, this is just a subdivision case. So the PUD, when they, they came in and the drainage and all of that was designed for the apartments for this phase, most of it, other than that one small site. As far as I know, the, nothing has been designed or planned for the residential. So they'll have to do, they'll have to come back through with a preliminary plat that addresses all the checklist items.
Again, that's going to be to the east.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for staff at this time? All right. Stuart, do you have anything to add, or any of your folks have anything to add?
Yeah.
Okay. That case, I will open the public hearing at this time. This is a multiple occupancy project, so it, unlike the prior project, will not go to the city council. So this is your chance, if you are in the public and wish to speak to this item. Yes, ma'am. And just if you come up, just for protocol, if you'll state your name and your address for our secretary, so she can put you in our minutes.
My name is Garrett Dover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. When I looked at the packet, I looked at this principally for the pedestrian and bicycling kinds of provisions. In the pedestrian circulation plan and in the overall planting plan, there really wasn't enough detail in the diagrams for me to be, to completely understand what was going on. So a fair amount of my concerns are just kind of based on a lack of information. The, in our current comprehensive land use plan, we say that pedestrian and bicycle connections and parking should be incorporated into the design of all nodes. So this is a, this is a principal village node. Plugging this development into the overall idea of the village requires thinking outside the box of this particular project in order to provide for connection and try to figure out how things are going to flow. And we want to encourage walking and bicycle use and get less use of vehicles through these places. So I was hoping to see evidence of that kind of thinking going into this. I, I really didn't see what I had hoped to see. It seemed to be very internal pedestrian circulation within the village and so on. And the other aspect of it was, in our subdivision regulations and our such provisions, all streets shall include pedestrian areas comprised of a planting strip and a sidewalk, and sidewalks on both sides of the street and all that sort of thing. I did not see that in the, in the plan and the internal circulation plan. The other thing that I would recommend is that the, here, in order to make bicycling and, and walking and alternative means of transportation enjoyable and rewarding and worthwhile, you need shade. You've got to have shade. On, on a lot of the internal circulation, there, there seemed to be a real absence of trees in the planting plan. So I think I would recommend that in order to make these kinds of things work for the long haul, we need to put more emphasis into the plantings. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Cindy Powell. I live at 7843 Parker Road. I live east of where Cordy Ridge feeds into Parker Road, and I, you cannot see the vehicles coming from the apartments. So I'm the one that requested the yield sign. It's a high incline to go from where the apartments are. It's a very curvy road, and there's lots of vegetation. And I'm pulled out onto Parker Road oftentimes, and a car is zipping by me at 35 miles an hour. So some, a yield sign there would be very beneficial, and maybe some speed bumps to slow the traffic down a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
My name's Trevor Stubbs. I am the owner of 7935 Parker Road, which is the, the property right north of the proposal. First off, I just want to acknowledge, man, what a great place we live, and it is totally reasonable on why people want to move here. And I am totally in support of that and, and the growth and development of our, of our great place to live. But I think it's important to grow safely without causing damage and harm to existing residents and the environment. Most of what I really want to talk about is just focusing on that Area 2 or Site 2 on the plans, which is Phase 5 of this development. First off, I want to recognize and acknowledge the attention that's already been made to the northern border, which affects me directly. So I sincerely appreciate the comments and recommendations, specifically on the requirement for the 15-foot undisturbed border, the requirement of the eight-foot opaque fence, and allowing additional planning in the buffer zone, as well as the attention that's been paid to the, to the sidewalk placement for the pedestrian flow. As mentioned just a few minutes ago, there certainly have been changes to the plans for this Site 2 from the previous plans, where it certainly appears to me the, the density of the homes has been changed to the point where ignoring that, that more eastern side of Site 2, given the slope of that, of that property and the topography there. And so I, I wanted to, I think if we just take a, a brief look at Area 2. And so I wanted to, I think if we just take a brief look at Area 2, it shows that it's a somewhat awkward-shaped parcel of land that has a steep slope going from north to south and in general from west to east. The current proposal shows three buildings in a line containing eight units, six units, and then eight units. If you look on the north side of that line, there's a five-foot retaining wall that runs the length of that construction. And then on the north side, and then on the east and south part, there's a nine-foot retaining wall that's required to support the building's structure, given the topography and that steep slope. I think I wanted to take a step back and, just from my review of the zoning, Fairhope zoning ordinance, you know, one of the, when you look in the townhouse section in regards to the intent, it says specifically to prevent long, unbroken lines of row housing and make efficient, economical, comfortable, and convenient use of the land and open space. I think that as you look into the requirements of some of the townhomes in that zoning ordinance, it talks about how no single building shall have more than eight units, which clearly they're following. It talks about a minimum lot area of 3,600 square feet. Talks about how each townhouse shall have its own lot, one rear yard containing not less than 400 square feet reasonably secluded from the view of right-of-ways or from neighboring property. And I think that if we, and then from Table 3.2, which is the dimension table, lots and principal structure, and I realize this is PUD, so that's, but if you look at the R3 townhomes, it talks about a minimum lot width of 24 feet. It talks about a rear setback of 35 feet. And if we zoom in and kind of focus in on this Site 2 of the proposal, I noticed that the widths of these townhomes are mostly 20 feet wide as opposed to the recommended 24 feet in that table above. The rear setback is only 20 feet, so it's 20 feet from the rear part of the building or the garage to the townhome loop, I believe is the name of the road. And so you have a 20-foot driveway of a 20-foot wide townhome, so essentially that space behind there just makes 400 square feet, but half of that's going to be your driveway. I think that, I think overall, if you, again, take a step back and you look at the elevation changes on, it was Page 45 of the thing, of the agenda, in the illustration on Page 81, Area 2 essentially consists of tightly packed townhomes with the surrounding green space being on the other side of a nine-foot retaining wall, on the other side of a steep driveway of about 18% slope, and then the green space itself is an 18% slope, which would be largely unusable. I think that, in summary, the current proposal for Area 2 pushes the boundaries in numerous categories and regulations for this type of build, including the number of units in the density, the lot width, the setbacks, the yard space per lot, total square footage per unit, plus you get a steep entryway and green space with approximately somewhere between a 16 and 18% slope would be my guess. I think it pushes the boundary with the amount of dirt work and environmental damage necessary to build the retaining walls to support this number of structures, potential damage or erosion of Fly Creek and potential monitoring needed there. I think it seems clear that the design of this area is not for the betterment of the neighborhood or Fairhope as a whole, but to squeeze the highest number of units into the smallest space possible. I understand the need for development and growth of our great community, but pushing and bending the rules and setbacks, the minimum widths, the environmental concerns, et cetera, to squeeze in as many units as possible in an awkwardly shaped, high-slope parcel is what is going to get us in trouble. As I said, I appreciate looking at the sidewalk layout, but if there isn't room for a sidewalk on that side of the street, is that a sign that there are just too many units to begin with? Thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the audience wish to speak about this project at this time? All right, that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Stuart, we had some questions. Do you want to answer those, or do you have somebody that would like to address the questions from the audience? I think one of the big ones that the first and third person both spoke to is the pedestrian flow. How will people get to, you know, one of the reasons we allow the density near the commercial component is so that hopefully people can walk or bike to Public Shanghai Cottage, McConnell Fitness, or any of the businesses there. Can you explain the pedestrian flow?
Come up as well.
And also, we had a question about the green space, the 20-foot width of the buildings, the green space, and then the retaining walls. If you could explain, you know, just confirm what the green space, will that be a 16 to 18-foot incline and is that a usable green space?
Yeah, the, let me, if I may, first just respond on the northern parcel, Cordy Ridge, on the north side of Cordy Ridge. Yeah, we think that topo lends a lot of interest to the development and that it'll actually really be an attractive presentation coming down the hill. We've got, we've got good breakup amongst the groups, the 8, 6, 8. We've got good breakup in the roof lines, and we think it's going to be a really nice, nice presentation coming down that hill. We understand the neighbors to the north, their concerns about the screening, and we think, you know, we're adequately addressing that, and that, we appreciate that concern. We've got the 15-foot undisturbed buffer, the fencing, the landscaping that was specified, and so we think that we're addressing that as well as we can. So anyway, that's a thought on that piece. With regard to pedestrian connectivity and circulation, as Hunter said in his presentation, we'll be working with city staff to make sure that we get from the private to the public adequately, and we'll, you know, we'll work that out. So we've been very sensitive to it. We've been, we've had multiple meetings with staff to go over these kinds of issues, and there've been a couple, three iterations of our project, as you know, and so we, there've been a lot of eyes on it, and we feel like we're getting to a really good solution, and that, as far as that goes, so.
And I'll add a couple points of clarity. You know, I think our comp plan that's in a draft phase, it does acknowledge, really, City of Fairhope's done a great job of pedestrian connectivity for quite some time. Bike, bikeways and things like that is not something we have in our regulations. We are acknowledging that in the comp plan and hope in the future as we're looking at other projects, some of the newer things on 181 does accommodate for those things, and we appreciate, even without regulations. Again, this project was established long ago, and the sidewalks, the roads, Cordy Ridge Road was built, you know, it has sidewalks, those pedestrian plans are there, and we're looking to just make that final connection here. There are private sidewalks on both the apartments and the townhomes that will be connecting to that. So the pedestrian connectivity, I think, was both in the original plan and now...
Is it, some of it gravel, though, and is that?
The, the, from the apartments to their pool is stairs and then a gravel area. So I do think a public sidewalk does need to be a concrete hard surface. We do have that on Cordy Ridge Road, so that connectivity all the way to Greeno and the city council has approved, I believe, I don't want to speak out loud here, there is a joint project with the city and the county, I believe it's a half million dollar project to have put pedestrian signalization there at Parker Road that gets all the way back over to Main Street. Does that ring true, Councilman? So that, you know, to think we're not doing anything about pedestrian is, connectivity is, that is, remains a high priority. And up until, basically, we saw this revision when we get comments back, and there's not a whole lot of time to go through a lot of information, so it just, it, up on top of the hill didn't make sense, so kind of going back to the connectivity, I think, is a good solution for everyone. There are streets here that do not have planting strips. This is a PUD. There were private streets approved, both at the apartments and the townhome sections. Those do not have the same requirements with public streets and the green space and strips and landscape strips and sidewalks on both sides. All of this was a PUD approved and the connectivity and streets were approved on the front end. And to that end, I think it's important to reemphasize that this was a PUD and approved at site plan driven. So it's unfair to go to the zoning ordinance and just look and pick out specific things, such as rear yards. Those are things we do, and if we had another townhome on the agenda, and the reason they're not is because their rear yards were 350 square feet instead of 400. So we are making sure those things happen when applicable, but this, again, was presented as a PUD. They have the opportunity to ask for some differences and be approved and accommodate those things. So there is no density change whatsoever. I think, Stuart, day one, I made sure that that was not going to happen.
We didn't propose a change.
Even on the Site 3, that was the same number of units. What about the green space usability with the incline there? Has that been reviewed, Stuart? Do you know the...
Through the woodland there, area? You talking about on the north side of Cordy Ridge?
Dr. Stubbs was asking about the, about the slope, 16 to 18%.
Yeah, that is a, as far as, that's for everybody's personal, that's, that is this area here, I mean, as far as a usable green space, that's a slope. There's not much use there. Is it, does it help beautify the area and give a frame for, as you're driving down Cordy Ridge? Certainly it provides that buffer, but as far as a flat player, it is not that.
But without that, the green space met the requirements of the PUD as far as...
That being site plan.
Recreation for the...
Yeah. Well, and a lot of the overall green space was provided in the wilderness area along Fly Creek, so the overall PUD was, and then there's still, with the future phase, you know, there's more green space to come.
If I may, I was also referencing the further east of the Site 2, where the steep driveway comes down, where it's marked in red right now, up to the top right, and the space also to the further east of that.
Yeah. Yeah. That... Jump right in there. Yeah, that was where the two units were here. What they recommended and we support, does that become usable parkland? It's on a steep slope. It's one of the requests came in to not put the two units there. But do we get to keep some trees and things like that there? That's the trade-off, so.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Are the trees shown and what we're seeing on the screen here, is that existing trees or proposed little plant new trees? I've got no problem with parkland on a slope people walk through, and that's just a different kind of green space. It doesn't all have to be the playing ball. But I just, is that, are those existing or proposed trees or something?
You'll correct me if I'm wrong, but on the tree, you see kind of the natural, where the natural here, that was the area that wasn't being graded, so the trees in this area are being preserved. And then there was some along the...
Down the east in that triangle we were talking about.
Those, I believe, there's some grading that has to happen on this road that'll, that's probably pretty accurate, your engineers might be able to correct that, pretty accurate for that grading, but then everything else can remain.
Yeah. Yeah, some of that is kept steep. The area east of the road would be as untouched and left natural as possible. So we're just trying to cut that road in, work with the existing grades, and leave everything else alone as much as we can.
I guess...
Thank you. And one of the, one of the things we did, this area did have some steep slopes from the grading, and the only thing, traditionally, we require what, two feet of sod along a roadway for stabilization purposes. We want to see more in the landscape plan. That's a steep slope, and do want to see more. That was one of the comments in our staff report for the revised landscape plan.
Do we know what the retaining walls will look like? And one of the renderings of one was sort of green as if vines had grown over it, which is, you know, a great thing to do, but I don't see a detailed retaining wall.
Yeah, there...
Not to get too far into the weeds, but there's a lot of them.
Yeah, Keystone. Keystone wall. Keystone wall, that, we've got a partial wall in the northwest corner existing right now of the development, and so it'll be similar to that. But yeah, these vines can be grown on these, and if you look at the apartments, they've got vines, pretty good vines on their walls. Yeah.
Even the one behind the Publix. I mean, it's back of house, dumpsters and things like that. That's a pretty tall wall. It's beautiful. If we can accommodate that, I think that's a great solution.
And that would be the plan, right there. That wall looks great. Yeah. Because you can't see it.
Yep. So. Thank you, Stuart. Any questions for Stuart while he's up here? Commissioners, any question for staff? Thank you, Stuart. And I will put under our disclosures, I did talk to Stuart on the phone, and he came by my office and discussed the project prior, but he did not listen to my idea of making a great rooftop bar to pull everybody from this project to the Publix and back, which I think all my ideas are great, but nobody agrees with them. Anyway, any other disclosures need to be made? If not, commissioners, with no further questions, any discussion that needs to be made, or I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve...
I'm sorry, I'll go back to... I read those in the records, so if you don't have any comments, so if they made staff recommendations, it's okay.
I move we approve SD 24.14, subject to staff recommendations, conditions.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendation, so I have any, a second.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. All right, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ZC 2403, a public hearing to discuss a request of Fairhope P and Z for various proposed amendments to the Fairhope zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a pretty easy amendment, and Michelle mentioned during our review of Thomas Hospital site plan, this text amendment. So, you know, as we had in our joint meeting, there was a couple of discussions on variances being needed, and variances are something that we've had clarification through the years that, you know, what is the hardship for something? So we saw some potential conflicts with hospital and being that some of those buildings were built in the seventies way before a medical overlay district or current regulations, what do we do about that was the question? And this is the solution we're proposing, and just before I read the words or get into it, the intent here is when the hospital critical infrastructure is being expanded and tying to existing buildings, they can follow the height and the setbacks of those building lines, or not setbacks, but those building lines. That doesn't apply to everything the hospital does. If they build a parking deck or an administrative building, you know, they should meet the specifications prescribed within the medical overlay district. We will also, however, in the future, be looking at a bigger amendment to the medical overlay district that not only includes the hospital, but some of the other things we've talked about in the comp plan and future goals. I believe, we're hoping kind of Thomas Hospital gets their master plan together by the time we do that, and we really can coordinate this a little better. But this is the, this is the red language on the screen, is the only thing we're proposing. You know, and we're basically specific, we talked during that joint meeting about how to write it for only places with so many hospital beds and definitions. Some of this language, kind of appreciate the woman, he left, but he got me some language, and then we added our own. So the intent here is for the new buildings or expansions providing certain level of hospital care in a generic term, and they can align with the height and setbacks of the existing buildings. As most of you know, really one of the only conflicts for the setbacks was on Ingleside. You know, the hospital is B2. There's technically an argument in that Thomas doesn't apply in the medical overlay district, but this clarifies... doesn't apply in the medical overlay district, but this clarifies any gray areas. B4 was the dimensional standards, even though the zoning was B2, this would allow them, it's the last building, every other building is built to the rear property line along Ingleside. So they'd match that building line and then match the tower adjacent on the height. And it's as simple as that. So this is kind of tied to the, the site plan approval. If you have any questions, it is this one paragraph.
Any questions for staff about this paragraph?
No.
Jay, our resident attorney?
I do not. We, you know, we discussed this, we were discussing the Thomas Hospital project several months ago and I think, I think it really came up in the joint meeting we had in here where, you know, we're trying to square peg round hole these problems and it just seems to, to alter the, what medical overlay district means, seems to eliminate any confusion or any of the problems before it, because I think this helps, at least in the short term.
Right. And I think, I think that's the goal.
Accommodate any of these issues that we're going to have.
Does it need to be existing adjacent, so it's not something four blocks over?
Well, that, that, new buildings or expansions of existing, I mean, the word adjacent sometimes can be tricky, just like this tower, it's, is it adjacent?
Something about...
It's 10 feet away.
Connected.
It's connected. It's connected with a walkway, so you could potentially...
It's not three blocks away, though.
Yeah.
I doubt anything would be proposed, but just as a, just in case, so.
Yeah.
I just could add the word connected.
Can we change it without having to re-advertise it?
Oh, yeah. We, we, we don't have to advertise until we get to the council. So I would prefer we really discuss this on the wording or flesh it out now or either what we can do is make some amendments, send it to you via email, you communicate back to us individually and let us know your thoughts and we can even get a, maybe a memo in front of council or something at a work session and see before we send the advertisement out. I think that might be thoughts, but you can certainly send me comments back and, and your input.
We'd still need a recommendation?
Yes.
From Planning Commissioner to the council.
It looks pretty good. I mean, I think when we list Thomas in parentheses, it's hard to get too confused about what we're talking about.
That was the, that was a fear of anything in the medical overlay district going in. And I do, I mean, that, that was the intent of the newer expansions of existing buildings. New, new, and, and that, that is a little gray.
Should be expansions of the existing Thomas Hospital. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to tighten it up so it's not...
We can put on record the intent and say the intent is not something that is three blocks away.
Not separate.
This is, this is the existing buildings.
Listing it as 24 hours, there's really nothing, I mean, the only thing in that area, unless I'm mistaken, the only thing even remotely close to that that's 24 hours is the actual hospital itself.
Well, and...
And one other point, I think, is even Thomas Hospital, when we talked to them about, is there another location on the property where they could build where it wasn't over that existing parking, was they want, they need to be, they need to be close to it. Being four blocks away with another emergency services to get back to the other side of the hospital doesn't work for them anyway.
I don't see even them, I mean, I'm just trying to cover all of this, even just stating the intent.
Oh, no. I think we did it by saying new, because we're, we're referencing the existing buildings, not something that is, that, even if Thomas Hospital said, we want to buy something over there and do that, I think that would require a revision and...
Between existing 24-hour and the name of Thomas Hospital, I think we're probably okay.
Isn't...
And who else builds that tall?
Excuse me, but isn't the location specifically by roads set out in the medical overlay district? I mean, does it, can find it to?
They go all the way down to Greeno Lane.
It goes down further.
It's, it's quite a few, yeah. We're, we're even looking at...
They're right next to campus.
Yeah. It does.
I haven't looked at it on a map, so I was just curious.
It covers a lot of ground.
If some tower pops up, that's...
Again, Thomas Hospital only owned and then even for them, it's...
It's got to be existing.
Existing and critical.
I have concern about the word connected, just throwing that out there, so.
Connecting adjacent bother me a little bit.
Okay.
Can we say, okay, new Thomas Hospital buildings or expansions of existing buildings? To be clear, that we're just talking about...
We don't want new.
Yeah.
When it says, Thomas Hospital, it says...
What says new buildings or expansions of existing buildings? I just wanted to tie that back to Thomas Hospital.
The, the first part ties Thomas Hospital. For, in parentheses, that existing medical center.
It also says it doesn't apply to auxiliary buildings and it says 24-hour.
Okay.
I think we're good. Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Does anybody in the public wish to speak to this item? One, two, three? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Now Rebecca, I like how your lawyer brain is working down there.
I...
Actually, that last part makes me, okay, we say Thomas in one sentence, but not the other.
I mean, how many times, how many times does, I mean, Hunter and I spend a lot of time tracking down creative designers who find things worded a certain way?
Big calls in the field.
Yeah, so. I still, I'm com, I mean, I'm comfortable with the wording itself.
Yeah, just adding an abundance of caution to appe, to appease our, our third resident lawyer of the group. Just kidding. New buildings or expansion of existing buildings at Thomas Hospital, providing 24-hour medical psychiatric, I mean, if you put it in there, it doesn't really change the meaning, it makes it pretty clear and I think it covers your concern. So it seems like a, a simple solution if that is what you would support.
Okay, I want to make a motion as such.
I move, what are we doing here? We're submitting this...
Recommending approval to council.
Okay, I move, we recommend approval to council of the revisions to medical overlay district as proposed with the addition of new, of Thomas Hospital in the second sentence, new buildings or expansions of existing buildings at Thomas Hospital, adding at Thomas Hospital in that second sentence.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any, you got that, Secretary Madam? All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. No further business. In that case, I will...
I move we adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.